Hi. You're good? I will call our January 23, 2020 Coffee County School System Work Session to order. Thank you all for being here tonight. And I would like to ask Dr. Banks, who's always so gracious to lead us in our indications of getting our meeting.
Yes, let us pray, please. Father God, we come to you tonight thanking you for all your many blessings upon our lives and letting us be here today this afternoon. I pray, Father God, that we realize that you have not given us a spiritual fear, but one of power, love, and of a sound mind. And I pray tonight, Father God, and in this season that we live in, that you will touch the minds and the hearts of all of our children, all of our students, all of our personnel members, certified and classified. And I pray, Father God, in this year 2020, that you empower us to do good things and let us lead and walk by faith, not by sight. And I ask, Father God, if you touch our superintendent, touch our board members, touch everybody that's affiliated with this school system. And I pray, Father God, that we will do the best that we can to lead your people in this particular year. And I pray, Father God, that we will be uplifted, we will have a joy and a good peace of mind. I pray tonight, Father God, that you will bless all the Reed families this year coming in, coming in and people just leaving day by day. And I ask to touch all of the loved ones of every family that's assembled here tonight. In Jesus' most precious name we pray. Amen.
All right. Fellow school members, you've each given a copy of the agenda. You've had time to review that. Ask for a motion to accept the agenda.
Make a motion to accept the agenda, Mr. Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. All in favor? Very good. All right.
Yes, ma'am. Tonight on the agenda to start this new year, it's our first meeting of the year and welcome everybody here. We have the minutes from our last monthly meeting, December. Board members, you've had a chance to review those minutes. I'm going to take a moment to look over them. Any questions about the minutes? Any changes? If there's no changes to be made to the minutes, I would ask that we place those on the consent agenda for the regular meeting. Financial report. We have the financial report. Of course, this is December financials. And we have Monsieur, our finance director, here tonight to present the financials. Monsieur, if you want to review those with the board.
Yes, sir. This is the financial report as of December 31, 2019. We began the fiscal year of FY '20 with $14,953,265. For the month of December, we have ended for the fund equity balance of $21,578,549. December is the peak month for our local tax revenue. Moving forward through June, those, our local tax revenues, you know, will decline. So, and then also we'll have our pools that we'll pay out in July and August for our 10 month employees that will reflect, you know, the decrease in that.
Any questions about this document? Our second document on the financial report is the comparison. This gives us a comparison, December of '20, '19 to December of '18, so forth.
Now, now you said December is our peak month, but that's a significant difference from prior years.
When you compare the local tax revenue to last year, there is about $634,000 increase from last year and then about a $323,000 CIBT increase in the previous year.
People are buying cars. There's no questions about the comparison report. We've got the third document, which is the detailed monthly financial report. Monsieur, if you want to walk us through that.
The first page here is our revenues, our detail of our revenues that we have received as of December 31, which shows our local revenues, is that top line in the CIBT we were referring to earlier in our state. It's there. And we end the month debt-to-revenue at $32,552,986.66. And this is our expenditures as of December 31, broken down by the different functions of the school system. And you see that in the bottom there, our expenditures was the $26,995,392.54. And if you move on forward, you can see that our fund equity is the $21,509,000, excuse me, sorry. Yes, the $21,507,854.93.
Of course, our state legislature is in session at this point. The governor has presented his budget recommendations. We'll be getting more information on that as we move forward. The matter of news that the governor recommended increases for teachers and classified staff, so that would be something we have to consider moving forward and managing that. While it's good news, there is a local expense to that, you know, because what they do fund is to earn positions and, of course, we have positions that are beyond what state funds and so. But as we move into the budget season, we'll have more discussions about that. Good news is they're keeping the state QBE funded as it has been this year, but state revenues are down and they're actually having other state departments make cuts, but fortunately our public schools have been spared those cuts at this point, so hopefully that'll continue. All right. The last report, the fourth report is the East Plots. And as you can see on the East Plots report, our December collections are up over last year. And the collections for the year exceeded the previous year, so that's a good trend. Any questions or comments about the financial report? Pretty good. All right. If it pleases the board, we'll place that on the consent agenda for approval at the regular meeting. Out of state travel. We have a number of trips. Ambrose, second graders going to the zoo in Jacksonville. Eastside, kindergarten's going to the zoo. And Satilla, fourth grade desires to go to the Museum of Science and History in Jacksonville. We'll place that on the consent agenda. Number seven, surplus property. Our maintenance department has requested that we declare surplus. Some of the property at the warehouse we have in Ambrose, including some pictures of some of those items. And then buses, the transportation department has a number of buses that they've been cannibalizing parts off of and using spare parts off of. They've gotten all the good they can get out of those old buses and want to get them off of the transportation department block and ask the board to declare these surplus and be sold on Gov. Deals. I did ask Dr. Banks to take a look at the buses. Any comments about?
Well, I would say they've been in bad shape. They need to be getting gotten off of that property. It'll look a whole lot better out there as far as the looks of it. But I will say one thing that I did pick up on yesterday that's beneficial to the whole system is the video management system that was installed over Christmas break. And from an administrative standpoint, going back to my years as a assistant principal and having to have bus discipline part of my assignment, I would say when you can go on a bus now and you can look at FERC laws, but at the same time, you can zoom into the student that's in question and you can look at what that student is doing. If somebody cuts the seat, you can pick that up right away and just fight that brakes out. You can just go to that one student, you can have information. If the parent wants to persist, you can let that parent video, watch the video if he wants to do that. On top of that, sometimes throughout the course of the semester, I get calls about buses speeding in certain areas, running bus stop signs. We can also look at that, but it can actually zoom in and tell the miles per hour that bus is actually driving on that route. Also, it helps out with accidents, if there's an accident that happens. You can actually look at and see who was actually at fault with certain, I guess, positions of that camera that could actually help us in many situations. So I think that's the most powerful thing that I've ever seen in the history of my educational career when we look at doing bus discipline or keeping order on that bus, not only for the student, but keeping everybody accountable for what they happen to do. So that's one thing. I was very pleased going over there yesterday to discover and look at that particular news tool that we have. Now, Chan wants to say something more about that video management system. I think it's a very powerful thing.
It's not, Dave, if you look at what we've got now versus what we had before. It's amazing.
That's good. Thank you for sharing that.
And that's on all of our buses, great. Well, thank you.
They were able to do all of that during Christmas break, aren't they?
Yes, I believe, yeah.
I want to thank the board for approving the purchase of those cameras. If it pleases the board, we'll place those surplus items on the agenda. Technology is number eight. We've been discussing with Dr. Newell, the technology director, the technology needs for the system, and he has a plan for improvement in maintaining our technology within the district. And so Dr. Newell has a purchase and then E-Rate projects and technology upgrades to present to the board tonight. So, Dr. Newell, if you want to describe these different items as well?
Yes, sir. First of all, this is part of our ongoing plan to replace our aging projectors and interactive board fleet in our schools. The replacement at Coffee High just happens to be coinciding with the renovation out there right now. We figure since that ceiling grid is coming out and holding ceiling will go up, it's an ideal time to replace that ceiling plate that's got those projector. The classrooms now have the same type of setup we got in here. And what we're moving to, we've got in four schools now, is the wall-mounted short throw projector that's mounted up above the board at the front of the room. So we are looking at replacing those during the renovation at Coffee High, which will be starting just, excuse me, just a few weeks. We did put this up for bid. As you can see, we had a good turnout, around 10 or so responses, and our recommendation is to award the projector bid to Solutions out of Atlanta. As you can see there, they came in well under the next, under their Howard Technology Solutions. We had used this company in the past, we're familiar with them, and we feel good about that, that bid for the projectors.
We would ask the board to approve this purchase tonight so that they can go ahead and get equipment and prepare to install it as we go through renovations at the high school.
And next, we also had an RFP out for the whiteboards. Rather than using an active board or interactive touch panel, what we're using now, we've got it placed in several schools. We've got this in our Career Academy in Rockston and Nichols. We're just putting a large whiteboard, it's a five-by-12 board. That flat surface becomes interactive due to the interactive projector that we pair up with it. So due to the number of these, we did put it out for bid, and you see there, we have fingers, 19 proposals that we received are bids on that one. And Claridge Industries came in with a low bid on that one, $32,110.40, which is a very good price on those boards. And we did check out the specs and the quality, and it's up to the specs that we put out there. So we feel very comfortable wearing this to Claridge for $32,110.40. And then lastly, the installation of those two items. Our maintenance staff and my staff have been installing the projectors as we've been progressing through our upgrades. We did Ambrose Elementary over the summer, we've done West Green during the fall semester. And with a project this large, with my staff and maintenance staff being stretched thin, we thought it would be best to contract that out and have some help come in and do that as part of the renovation process. So we did receive a number of bids on that one, and as you can see there, we had a very low bid from 525 Technologies for $26,132.
Where are they out of, Jim?
They're out of Lawrenceville, Georgia.
You've done background on them, I suppose?
I have checked references, had several people, vendors that we work with that know the young man. It's a fairly new startup company, he's been in business for a couple of years, but he's got some good references out of the Atlanta area. He's done some work in Troy City Schools in Alabama. He is eager to get in this market down here. I called him to make sure that he was aware of the works capable. His rooms are going to be done in blocks of six, and it's going to be a several month process, and he's looking a lot of tricks down there. He said he wasn't totally aware of that and realized, he said, "I should have known that when you look at how many rooms you're doing in blocks of six at times, it's going to take a while." So I let him run his numbers over the weekend. He got with me on Monday, and he said he could do it for that amount. He would do it. So we will hold it to it. Everything does check out, it's a very low bid, but he says he can do it for that amount. So that's our recommendation, and we go with 525 Technologies for this one. We would like to approve all three of these tonight so we can go ahead and get the material in order. They're going to be, I'm sure they'll be starting in a hot, potentially two to three weeks with the renovation out there, and the board's, it's about a four or five week lead time, so we need to get those ordered to get them there in time to be on. So we are asking those to be on the consent agenda for the meeting tonight. And the other two items I have are for information. E-Rate has been quiet for a number of years. We did our switch upgrades and our wireless upgrades about eight years ago and five years ago, respectively. We did receive word just before the Christmas break that we've got some additional funding in this current year for E-Rate, and it is a use it or lose it year. So if we don't use this, we will not, we will lose it forever, basically. We won't have a chance to use this again. The available budget that we have, you can see there's $988,486.17. And of that, the way E-Rate works is if you're in a low-income, high-needs area, it used to be 90% discount, now it's 85% discount. So we're eligible for USAC, the Universal Service Company, to pay 85% of the projects, and there so will be $840,213.24. That will leave our local responsibility, 15%, just $148,272.93. So what that means is we get $988,000 worth of products and services and we pay $148,272. So with that, we've identified some priorities that we would like to pursue, and these are prioritized from left to right. Our wireless upgrade, our wireless network is about five years old, and the technology, that's a lifetime thing to change quickly. Our current access points are dual LAN, they run on 2.4 GHz and 5 GHz. At the time we got those, our devices were well balanced, we had a mix of both frequencies. Now with the newer Chromebooks, the newer devices, probably 95% of our devices are running on 5 GHz, so we're getting a little bit of a bottleneck there. These are dual 5 GHz capable, which means we can devote the full spectrum to supporting the newer devices. So we would like to pursue wireless upgrades with a portion of that money, projections based on what we would like to put in place. I believe on this project, we're thinking we can do the wireless for about $325,000. Our caching server will be our second priority, and what that is, that's just a device that would sit on our network that is going to store a local copy of everything that is visited on the internet. If a group of students, our whole school, is going to Google Classroom to do assignments, it's going to store that page from Google Classroom locally, which means they don't have to go out to the internet to get it every time. It's serving it up from inside our network. If our Chromebooks are updating, the first Chromebook to go out to Google to get the update is going to pull down, save it on that server. Every other Chromebook in the district is going to update from that caching server locally, so it's taking traffic off our backbone going out to the internet. It's going to make our bandwidth that we have go further. If we don't do something like this, we're eventually going to have to increase our internet pipe. This is going to cut it down, best guesses from 60% to 70% of our bandwidth usage. So that project would be around $62,000, that's a turnkey solution, and that would leave around $600,000 that we could start looking at a network switch upgrade. The last time we upgraded our switches was, it was in process when I came into this role nine years ago. And we have Cisco switches, that was about a $1.2 million project to do the whole network. We're definitely going to go with something less expensive than Cisco this go around. We're looking at HP Aruba, have a lifetime warranty, we had those, that brand before we went to Cisco. They're a leader in the industry. We think we can do it for way, way, way less than that $1.2 million that we did last time. The $600,000 may not be enough to refresh all of our switches, but that will give us a start on the network upgrade. What we can do is replace the core switches, the key switches in the media center at every school and possibly expand out from there. If we're not able to do the full network refresh with this spot of money, our funding year will start, our five-year funding cycle will start again in '21, and we can wrap it up easily, be a part of that funding. So we've got a plan in place. We'll put it out for bid. What we'd like to do is post these bids on Monday, have them out there for 29 days, and have a recommendation for you at next month's meeting. That's sort of the plan we got in place. It's a tight timeline. Filing deadline is the day before our March meeting, so I will, I need to turn this around before you guys meet again in February.
The filing deadline for the E-Rate is?
For E-Rate, it's March 25, and we meet on, we meet again on the 26th.
And it just became available?
It just became available, December 10 or 12, I think it's.
Well, E-Rate, we've purchased a lot of technology with E-Rate, and that's a great system to use if you can, but we haven't done lately because our, okay, so their five-year cycle, basically something that may run out of money. And that's why we haven't done anything lately.
Right. We did, the last thing we did was our finishing up our wireless upgrade, and that's what they call category two. We're still using E-Rate funds for our cell communications, our water network, the fiber lease, the bandwidth, and those kind of things. But phone support's been phased out, web host has been phased out. So primarily, they've got two categories. Now you've got category one, which is cell communication, which is every year. Category two is the infrastructure, the wireless, the switches, servers, that sort of thing. It's very specific what you can do. You can't buy any of your devices, we can't buy Chromebooks and computers. It has to be basically to carry the data from the internet into our network right, infrastructure.
But after this, there's a new cycle starting that they are fighting for.
Right. And best guesses will have between $1.2 and $1.4 million in the next five-year cycle. So what we're not able to do this year towards the switches, we'll be able to use a little bit of that next year's funding to wrap that up, and then we'll have some other discretionary E-Rate funding we can use the next four years, if needed.
And the wireless upgrade, that's a system.
That's a system. That will replace the access point in every classroom in the area, around 650 access points we have currently.
We met previously and discussed this as an administrative team and talked through this, and I wanted to get this before the board, before we move forward and come back to y'all with a almost a million dollar request for technology. I want you to have a chance to look at it and understand how this E-Rate funding would be used and what the local contribution would be before we move any further. So, any questions for Dr. Newell? The E-Rate funding can only be used for a very specific type of technology.
Since it's been a relatively quick turnaround, we've just done an extensive inventory of our switches. We've got photographs of every rack with every piece of network hardware in the system, and I'm putting that together as part of the bid pack. So any prospective vendor will be able to see exactly what we've got and just count the number of ports we need, plus we're adding, we're projecting what we're going to need for our camera upgrade, which will come in later, audio enhancement, things like that are going to require support. So we're building to grow what we expect to do over the next five or six years.
Any questions? We'll be coming back to the board with more information as we gather.
And finally, we have some additional technology upgrades that we'd like to present to you. You may be aware that Microsoft will periodically in support for its operating systems. Windows 7 has been our go-to desktop operating system for a number of years, and it has officially reached end of life this month. Also, Server 2008 has reached end of life. We have a lot of Windows 7 desktops and a lot of servers running Server 2008. What that's going to affect is most of our teacher computers, the teacher stations that we have replaced in the last two years or so are capable of running Windows 10. We can upgrade those, we're in the process of doing that now. As part of our long-term planning, strategic planning, and we met with you guys at the retreat last year, we talked about the technology upgrade plans, and this is all part of that. It's coming to fruition now with the end of support. This is a note from Homeland Security that says we basically need to replace these things that are going to get risked. When Microsoft and others enter, stop supporting our operating systems, they're vulnerable to threats because they're not getting those security patches regularly. So we definitely need to address this. Talking to Monsieur Finance, we felt due to the number of these that we're going to do, we definitely need to put it out for. to do, we definitely need to put it out for bid. And what I'm proposing, I've got the RFPs ready to go out in the morning, is we post RFPs for desktop computers and for Chromebox workstations. The desktop computers are going to replace the rest of the teacher computers in the district that we've not had a chance to do yet, a lot of administrator offices, front office here and at the school level. The Chromeboxes will replace the remainder of our end computing, big line of workstations that are out there now. They run on those Server two thousand eight boxes that are at an end of life, so they've gotten done. We have been phasing them out over the last couple of years. We've got a few hundred of those left and we're pulling them out as quickly as we can. The classrooms that want to have a workstation for the kids will be replacing those end computing boxes with Chromeboxes. And it's worth noting, a lot of these classrooms are deciding not to replace them because they've got a class set of Chromebooks and those are more, more flexible, so we're not replacing every workstation that comes out. We're leaving that up to the school and the classrooms, if they want us to replace them, we give them a Chromebox in place of end computing. If they don't, we're clearing it out and they've got free time to take, save and use at deadlines. Our intent is to post RFPs tomorrow and again have these recommendations for you next month's four meetings, so we can start doing that. The language, the wording I put into RFPs was that these will not be bought all at one time. We'll award the bid to a vendor, the winning vendor for each one of those and we'll have an open PO for that amount and we'll work off of it between now and May. So we'll be getting it replaced. The first point is getting all of them in at one time because we don't have time to get them all out there and up and around there, it's taking up space and wasting warranty. So we'll order them as we're able to put them in. And I vote right up by some.
This is not, this is not E-Rate?
This is not E-Rate, this will be done with SLOST. Approximate prices on these, based on what we've done recently, recent bids, I'm guessing the desktop computers are going to come somewhere in the neighborhood of around one hundred seventy-one thousand dollars to get five hundred of those and that is including a large screen monitor upgrade. A lot of those have to go seventeen inch square monitor, so this will be upgraded to a twenty-two inch monitor. And the Chromeboxes, five hundred of those should run in the neighborhood of around one hundred fifteen thousand. So those two combined will be about two hundred eighty-six thousand dollars. If possibly we've had to pass those through with this volume, we hope to get better than
Once again, as we, as we talk about this in our meeting and I wanted to make sure we got out ahead of y'all, got you this information so that when we come back, y'all have, you understand that these are big, big purchases and, but it's, it's technology, it's equipment that's needed.
Right.
I do want to commend Dr. Newell and his department for, for making the best use of taxpayer dollars when it comes to the equipment. They, they change out keyboards and they, they refurbish our equipment and they don't, just like we do with the buses, we pull parts off the buses and put it into new equipment. They do the same thing with the technology.
The average age of the computers, the desktop computers that we'll be pulling out in this eight and a half to nine years old. And we have, about four or five years ago, we put solid state hard drives and memory upgrades in them to hopefully squeeze another year or two out and we've got way more than that out of them. So they're definitely end of life, we've got to do something. And that's all I have.
So the only purchase we're asking for tonight is the, the three items for the high school renovation, the boards, the projectors and the installation. Please, the board, please have a consent agenda. The next item on the agenda, number nine, is the school calendar proposals. And we studied the school calendar and wanted to bring to the board just three proposals and concepts for a calendar for next school year and just wanted y'all to certainly provide whatever input you want to provide on the calendar and, and have a discussion about school calendar tonight. So we're not asking.
We're not asking for action or?
No, no sir. We're not asking for any action, just wanted to have a conversation. And Ms. Miller's been working hard to prepare a couple of different options and talk with y'all about, so.
Okay. I have three calendars. Can you do open A?
This is A.
Okay. So this is draft A and draft A has eighty-nine days in first semester, student days, ninety-one days in second semester. Beginning, pre-planning, August third through sixth, school starting on August seventh. Of course, there's a Labor Day in September, parent teacher conference day, early release day in September. Then a professional learning, early release day, students would go home early and teachers would stay for a half of a PL day. And then our fall break on October second. And in November, there's an early release day on November twentieth. That's something that I don't think we've had on our calendars in the past, but it seems that in the last few years, we've had to have an early release day for various reasons, so we've placed that on the calendar this year. And Thanksgiving break would be the twenty-third through the twenty-seventh. Then in December, the semester would end on December eighteenth, that would be our eighty-ninth day with an early release day that day. And then Christmas break, Christmas holidays from December twenty-first through January first for teachers, January fourth for students. On January fourth, the teachers would have, would have a PL day. Then on January eighteenth, Martin Luther King holiday. Then in February, parent teacher conference, early release on February fourth. And then a winter break on February twelfth and President's Day on February fifteenth. In March would be a PL day, just like we had it scheduled in October with a half day for students and a half PL day for teachers. And spring break, April fifth through the ninth. And I will say this, spring break is the same as all the schools in our Okinawa K-Resa district and it's the week after Easter. And then school would end on May twenty-first. That would put graduation on May twenty-second and then PL days for teachers, the twenty-four through the twenty-seventh. So that's draft A. And you can see that there's a hundred and eighty student days and then ten PL days, nine days, nine whole days in the draft A. In draft B, it looks a lot like draft A, but there are just a couple of different, I think just more different actually. The start, the professional, the pre-planning PL days are the same, the start day is the same. Everything is the same until November. There's a Veterans Day placed in there on November sixth, but Veterans Day is on November eleventh. So we placed it on the calendar the Friday before. Then the other, so that puts us, we have an extra holiday, so that puts us at eighty-eight student days for first semester. Then for second semester, everything's the same, the same as calendar B, A, except in February, there is no Friday before President's Day. There's just the President's Day and then the rest is the same. We would end school on the twenty-first and then PL days would be the twenty-four through the twenty-seven. So in first semester, you have eighty-eight days and in second semester, you have ninety-two days with a total of a hundred and eighty student days and then ten PL days. In draft C, which is, I'm going to go ahead and say this, it's not really my favorite calendar, but I did this just because we discussed it.
I appreciate that, yeah.
But when you look at it, it's just really not, it's just not good academically, but we'll look at it. You are the board and you tell me what to do.
Can you tell me why it's not good academically?
Because in the first semester, you have eighty-four days and in the second semester, you have ninety-six days, twelve more instructional days than what student. So the students in an algebra class first semester would have eighty-four days of instruction and students in an algebra class in second semester would have ninety-six days of instruction. Still tested on the same material, but less time to learn the material. So that's, to me, that's fine. And plus the testing calendar, testing window from the state for end of course, my administration for winter starts on November thirtieth, twenty twenty, and it ends on January sixth, twenty twenty-one. So with this calendar, the testing window would end on January sixth. So there's, they would have to test before, so first semester would need to end before Christmas break, but yet they would still be shy, twelve instructional days. Anyway, I'm going to go over with you.
But there is the later start date.
There is the later start date.
Which we have talked about in the past and we've been working towards as late a start date as we can get. So you only have so many days to work with, so to get a later start date, this was the draft that we came up with.
Why are we working towards a later start date?
Well, it was just discussed in our meeting when we had the discussion in our leadership team meeting and so I did the calendar. I just did what I had to say.
When did we start last year, you know?
August tenth and that was on a Friday. We can.
Mr. President? Compared calendar C eighty-four to ninety-six, how's that compared to what we did this year?
This year, I didn't make the calendar for this year, but I think it's eighty-nine and ninety-one. I almost paused it, that's what it is, but I can get that answer for you and share that with y'all.
So it's subject to change.
No, once you adopt a calendar, that's our calendar for the year. This is just, we're just presenting these to y'all tonight, Ms. Wooderson, and for your input, so then I can take it and try to get it.
Can we log on some of these?
You're, you tell me another day.
Yeah, that's the point of this meeting is to discuss it and, and talk about what we'd like to do. You know, and the other rationale for even considering the C is the renovations at the high school, but we are going to be doing those renovations and a later start date could help with having that facility ready to start.
Well, I mean, I, I like the late start, but I don't like the idea of a late start just to start late. I like the idea that we have a balanced calendar as far as the days, first semester, day, second semester, give or take a couple of days, but twelve days, that's a lot of days.
It is a lot of days.
That's literally three weeks of instruction.
I mean, I, if you look at the holidays, we have a lot of the same holidays, Labor Day, Fall Break, we don't have to have a Fall Break, but.
Well, the challenge is pretty much you go to Christmas, you count ninety days back, you have ninety days forward and that's, that's your calendar.
Yeah, that would be great if that's the way it worked, but that, you know, that's, I mean.
But that's the framework.
That's what you really want to do.
Sometimes if Christmas falls or Christmas happens, on this calendar, you're going to have more weekends to get caught in those ninety days.
This, this calendar has a week at Thanksgiving. It still has two weeks at Christmas. It has Martin Luther King holiday, of course, and it has President's Day and then the winter parade with President's Day. And we pushed to getting that, spring break is still the same time because I told you we were trying to keep that the same, also at Okinawa K-Resa, all the schools in that, in our Resa district have the same spring break. And then May, in May, school would get out on May twenty-eighth, yes, and graduation, that would put graduation on May twenty-ninth. And then post-planning will be in June.
You never think of twelve days and it's basically the same?
Well, I was trying to get a hundred and eighty days, a hundred and eighty student days, because that's, teachers are paid on a ten month contract, which is a hundred and ninety days, a hundred and eighty student days and ten professional learning days. So I was trying to get that in there. Now, you know, you're the ones who, years ago during budget cuts, we did have to shave some days off, but.
And I think, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we've seen the benefit of a hundred and eighty days at school based on our graduation rate and our testings and things like that in the last few years because when we went back to a hundred and eighty days, the kids are in class at the corner.
They are and, and if you look at our, our data, our results, I mean, we're doing great work and so we do, teachers already, as a teacher, it, it is really hard to even teach the Georgia standards of excellence in this timeframe that we have our students. There's a lot to teach regardless whether you're teaching a semester class or you're teaching a year-long class. And then to think about telling a teacher of first semester that you've got only eighty-four days to teach, that's.
Ninety days.
Right, ninety days. And then second semester has ninety-two or ninety-six, so. But to get that hundred and eighty days, they couldn't come off the first, before Christmas because there are only so many days before Christmas starting later. Now, of course, you could shave some off, take out some of those holidays, but that wouldn't be very.
How does draft C differ?
Well, I mean, there's not, there's only, pretty much the basic holidays in first semester. There's no padded holidays, there's no veteran's day.
We started on the fifth, so I'll break it down.
There's a Fall Break, that's only one day.
So what's different? We started on the fifth.
We started on the ninth.
But it was on a Friday. Yeah, it wasn't that.
One school starts on the seventh, the one on the fourteenth.
That A and B start on the seventh and C starts on the fourteenth.
I'd like to know, because the calendar's not in front of us right now, but I'd like to know based on when our end of year this year is in relation to the August start and compared to how long the summer was. Because I, we could just say, we can say a later start for a later start, but it's the length of time between the end of school to the start of school that folks want for.
This year's summer, this year would get out on May twenty-second and then we would start back August seventh.
So what I'd be curious about is, is, is when we ended, right, so when we ended last year compared to the start, in the period of time between end of school last year and start of school?
No, very similar calendars.
I mean, we're working within a wheel, there's three hundred sixty-five spokes and all we're doing is shifting the spokes a little bit. So what I'm saying is, is the, the end of the year compared to the start of the year, how much time is in between comparative to like you've done with the eighty-four days and ninety-six days?
I can get that for you. I mean, I don't know, we're off the top of the list.
Well, I just think when we talk to people and they say, well, you're starting so early. Well, we ended early, you know, and that might be the compromise that we end early because we have to start early in order to get the days in for Christmas.
Are we getting comments that August seventh is early or August ninth is early?
No.
I don't get comment, I mean.
I, I just, we wanted to put some options out there and have some conversation about, about the different options that we have and so.
July would be early, but any kind of August start date, I don't think that's considered early.
I think eleven weeks from.
For the summer.
Teachers come back August the third.
That would be teachers pre-planning.
On A and B.
Both A and B.
But C though.
C is the one.
No, Murray County's the greatest. Hundred and sixty days, very long school.
This year we started later than a lot of systems.
We were the, we were one of the top, we were one of the latest, I think there were six systems that started later than us and it's only because they started on Monday, except for Murray County, which is the later day start. But they have extended day. The elementary schools are in session for like seven hours, seven and a half hours for elementary, something like that.
Well, this is good information. That's all we were presenting to ask tonight is information for conversation. Get some feedback from y'all that we want you to be pleased with the calendar.
We usually try to sign, we usually. We usually try to sign, we, we usually finish it up by the retreat, or we, the next meeting we approve it.
February meeting, and then we've got the retreat the day after the February meeting, so we can have conversations for that fourth meeting, and we can take action on it at the retreat if we wanted to.
I know, I know, I know the other schools in the county and preschools and things like that depend on us to put out a calendar for it.
It'd be nice if we could wrap it up by the end of February.
This was approved February twenty-eighth last year.
My deal is, we talk about every year, and there's just always so much, I mean, there's always so much you can do. You got testing dates, you got all these things, you just can't flag them so much. In my opinion, and just like it's been being, is, you know, none of us outside Dr. Lee's up here have to give us calendars. Pick your best calendar, send them out to the teachers, and whatever majority of them select, I'm fine with it.
I don't like Draft C for what you've already said.
We have done that in the past, in the past. But we have done that, and you know, some of them are still not gonna be happy because it's not one they chose, but the majority of them want one calendar.
That's why I feel like you choose. I agree completely.
I mean, that's what I'm saying, that's the people that have to give us calendars.
And I, we did do it, and we got away from that, and I'm not sure why we, we were trying...
They had done it.
But I mean, I, now, for the instructional reasons, it's Tim's outlet, I don't like Draft C.
There, there was one year, and that might be where we, there was one year we did have to flag them calendar, was because the nickel school were trying to get in.
Yes.
We did, we did do some changes that year because we're trying to make sure it's ready for the start of school year, and I think once we got done with that year, then after that, we just kinda fell off of that. We have in the past, put a couple calendars out there, asked their opinion, let them vote, and you know what, whatever they selected, I'm fine with it.
I can do that, we just, if that's what you want.
Are you comfortable starting early with that school? Yes, sir, I think, I think one and two make a lot of sense. Three is kind of a stretch, starting that late because of the, the number of days you're gonna be cutting out in that first semester, so... Uh, and, and we're starting a little later than a lot of systems anyways with, with the one and two, so... Three is really a stretch, but wanting to put it out there just so everybody can understand the challenges that we do have with trying to start any later, it just almost becomes impossible to start much later.
We did that one time when the government council dropped it early on, they, they wanted, and so we put all the dates up there. You know, look, here's the dates we've kinda got to make all this kid into, and after they talk about it for an hour, so they can take time to consider.
Just start at a Labor Day every day.
There's just not a whole lot to fit with, you know, to fit everything in those dates.
Start after Labor Day.
When I consider the calendar, we try to give the kid at least a minimum of ten weeks after they end up the last day and, and start of new school year. Also, with testing, most people prefer to finish testing at the conclusion of the first semester, they don't have to come back into the second semester and test. So that's, that's two important things that we try to look at when we decide the calendar for the upcoming year. But a lot of it's predicated on having that test, that child finishing the course and taking his test or her test before we come into the second semester. You don't wanna wait to, after the Christmas break, for them to come back and take the test, so that's what you...
And that's, that's the main problem with moving this calendar, are those dates.
Well, and honestly, with Dr. Dr. Banks saying that, with the window of testing that the state gives us, I mean, there's, there's really no time to get back in school and test before the window closes, so... I mean, you have to end first semester, um, before we go home.
I feel like the teachers should be more involved with this than us, because we're not teaching, and we're not testing our children, so, and I feel like they should, you know, be making the calendar, so, it has, has a lot to do with it, you know.
So I'll send out A and B, and not C, and let the teachers decide which one, get their feedback, and then y'all will...
Send them all three out.
She was very hesitant giving that third one out.
I can send all three, but I'm just telling you, as an educator, it is, it is not the best calendar.
One and two are very similar to what we're doing this year. Starting dates are right there, is what we're doing.
What, starting end dates is similar to what we're doing?
No, maybe the teachers can work with each other on...
You don't like being done by, by enforcement, I mean, completely done, the old days.
Fall break, they not getting many days with fall break, you know, so maybe the, the teachers, they can, you know, they've worked together on this one year, because, um, you know, we got other jobs, and, um, we gonna make sure...
There's just three days left.
Test our kid after he comes to Christmas, all the days come back.
Well, it's the same, it's still that first Fri- or that Friday, but it's just like calendars shift out this year.
I believe you're this year.
One was the night, and one was the seventh, but, um, yeah, what happens, Ms. Wolferson, I have heard that a lot, that the fall break, one a Friday and a Monday. But when you start later, it's still, you know, it only puts so many days between the start date and the time you would get out for Christmas, so, yeah. Let's give it to them, and let them, and tell us. Thank you, Kim.
All right, give y'all Ms. Miller. All right, policies. We're required each year as a board to review, uh, Policy BH, which is the Board Code of Ethics, and you can look in your policy manual, it's Policy BH, Board Code of Ethics. I'm not gonna read that policy word for word, but you have Domain One, which deals with the governance structure, Domain Two, that deals with strategic planning, Domain Three, which is Board and Community Relations, Domain Four, which is policy development, Five, Board Meetings, Six, Personnel, Seven, Financial Governance, Conduct as Board Members, and then Conflict of Interest is part of that policy. So wanted to have this on the agenda, each year we do this, to be in compliance with Georgia law, to review Policy BH, are there any questions about Policy BH? And then also, Policy BHA, Board Member Conflict of Interest. That policy deals with financial governance. You can look over that. Conduct as Board Members.
Bill Smith's coming to our retreat?
He is coming, yes, sir.
And he, you can get over a lot of these things, correct?
That's right, yes, sir.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
On, um, Domain Five, Board Meetings. I'd like to offer an amendment to Number Two, spell the word "and" with a D. It just stuck out like a sore thumb. I mean, being with the school board and all.
Thank you so much for your attention to detail, Mr. Preston.
Oh, hey, wait a minute, wait a minute, the sad thing is, I've been putting this in front of us for ten years, Jesse. I, I think Robin changes it up year to year and keeps on changing. Make sure we actually, make sure we actually do our homework. Thank you, Ms. Miller.
We will make that change. All right.
I just want the board, you know, consensus that we're gonna put a D on it.
You're very determined, Draft C.
But now, we just wanted to continue.
If there's no other questions, uh, we have selection of two thousand and twenty Board Officers. Board Members at, at your leisure.
So, um, typically at this time, we would vote to elect a new Chair and Vice Chair in the work session, and they would take on the new roles at the regular session following this meeting. Currently, I'm serving as the Chair, and Mr. Watt is serving as Vice Chair.
Motion, Mr. Watt, to be Chair next year?
And a motion, Mr. Watt?
As Chair?
As Chair?
I'll move for you on, I'll second that.
Then we did, then we need to vote for the second one, Chair and Vice Chair.
That would be proper, then, uh...
Doesn't matter. Do you have preference?
Uh, probably, there's gonna be, I'd probably do it together, sit in, man.
Okay.
Be written in.
Okay.
I need to withdraw, I love you.
Just amend the motion.
I would amend the motion for the, to include the Vice Chair this week.
I withdraw.
Okay. Motion, John?
I move to nominate Mr. Watt as the Chair, and Mr. Jowers as Vice Chair.
Motion on the table, for Mr. Watt as the Chair, and Mr. Jowers as Vice Chair, have a second.
And if you don't, Mr. Preston told me one time correctly, you don't have to have a second on the nomination, and that is correct.
Seems proper to you. Is there any discussion among the...
But we did wrestle about it.
Uh, but you...
We didn't wrestle afterwards, but it, we, it was, you know, it was, anyway, we got it done.
You can take the vote, somebody move to be closed if you want to.
Motion, move to be closed, there's no session, no session. I'll move the motion to be closed now, all right?
Got a second on that?
Second on that, all right. The vote, all in favor for the motion that's on the table? All in favor? Mr. Watt and Mr. Jowers to move in Chairman and Vice Chair? All in favor? Thank you very much. Exciting, thank you.
All right, so that gets us through selection of two thousand and twenty Board Officers, and, uh, moves into audience participation. I do have, uh, two names here for audience participation. Roscoe Allen and Michaela Rockington are here. Yeah, I'll read the public participation. While Board Meetings are public meetings and not meetings of the public, it has long been the policy and practice of this Board of Education to encourage citizens in our county to attend meetings with the Board and to allow citizens to offer their suggestions, comments, and concerns about our schools toward the end of the regularly scheduled work sessions that are held prior to each month of meeting. Of course, our citizens are invited to discuss their concerns with our Board Members at times other than just when the Board's meeting. This is also true of the Superintendent who welcomes your comments, input, and suggestions of ways to improve our schools. Persons desiring to address the Board during a work session should sign the Audience Participation Note prior to the beginning of such meeting, be recognized by the Chair before attempting to address the Board, and otherwise follow the published guidelines for public participation contained in the Board Policy BCBI. If someone has an issue, problem, or concern that can be resolved administratively, he or she should first contact Superintendent or the Superintendent designated in an effort to secure satisfactory solution prior to seeking to address the Board. The Board will not hear oral complaints or criticism regarding school personnel during public meetings.
Thank you, Dr. Lee.
So we have Mr. Roscoe Allen, yes, sir.
Dr. Lee, this is not relevant tonight, uh, but I noticed that the Board has that policy, the part about if a individual's got five minutes, and if there are numerous ones representing one group, the Chair gets to designate one, for some reason, that's on the back of the agenda, and it's not there, but I just pointed that out.
Yeah.
And so... That's gonna be relevant tonight.
Where's going to start with?
Uh, Mr. Roscoe Allen.
Mr. Allen?
First of all, I understand about your policy, about personnel policy, for personnel. I'm gonna come back about two personnel.
State with Dr. Lee's?
And number two, I have talked with General Counsel, Attorney, I have talked with Board Election in Atlanta, and I have talked with Attorney General in Atlanta. There are two procedures that a school board commission can remove from based on your charges. Number one is a recall. You gotta have fifteen percent of the red voting for a recall. Number two, impeachment, bring your charges forward to Superior Court, two hundred and ten dollars, fifty thousand. Now, I got some issues with some of the commissions, but I, I went on the State Board Regulation. Now, I came to Dr. Lee's last year. Also, I went on the local board regulation. There have been some State Board Regulation wrote and some local board wrote. I bought them policies too, in Dr. Houston last year. You can take it. Now, let me tell you what I'm doing. You, the school superintendent, you're supposed to oversee this board, work together, and y'all are supposed to make the best choices for the school system, either higher administration or lower administration. That's right, that's a fight now. We don't need no school board superintendent that can't either. They sit up here and let the commission do what they wanna do, how they free movement, different positions. Administration, that's right. That's a fight. We don't need that. I got every school administration paying him your two dollars a year, and you can pay out my type, my, my school board types is more than anything. I don't have a kid in the school system, Dr. Lee. Now, I'm standing here before a executive member of the NAACP, and that stands for National Association for Advancement for Color People. Now, I'm gonna tell you something, I don't go to no school board meeting, no city commission meeting, and no county meeting, I don't know what I'm talking about. I go strictly by the book and site, not no hearsay, you're not gonna record. So I'm coming back here, I'm gonna get with the school superintendent one more time. If it ain't satisfying, I'm gonna bring them same State Board record I bought you before in the old local board, y'all wrong. That's a fight, you hear me? I meant what I said. So if I have to get to just a part of him, then, then, I'm gonna do what I gotta do, because there's some stuff up here, racist discrimination stuff, and it's a fight with two people I know with the management here, but if I don't know how many of y'all... So I'm gonna string this board out, I don't care if I have to do whatever I gotta do, recall, I ain't gonna do no recall. Because I know I won't get no fifty percent of the red vote, but impeachment, it don't take no recall. I'll take a two hundred and ten dollars, five charges to Superior Court. That's all I got to say, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Rockington?
Hey, how everybody doing today? Um, I'm just here, um, I'm a parent in the school system, and, um, I have a daughter here. Also, I'm here representing NAACP, I'm the Vice President of NAACP in Coffey County. I'm also the State Community Chair Coordinator for NAACP State of Georgia. So what I focus on is African-American issues, when there's problems inside the community, and... Um, I'm not sure if you know where majority blacks live in Coffey County, but that would be Pearl... Um, I'm not sure if you know where majority blacks live in Coffee County, but that would be Pearl, um, Gaskin, Baker Highway. Majority blacks live over there in Ward Two, Three, One. Um, me just got finished, um, running for commissioner, I was able to knock on a few doors. And I was also able to speak to, uh, Superintendent Dr. Lee. And I was able to speak to Dr. Banks. In reference to parent involvement, I feel as though, um, parent involvement is necessary in our school system. That's one major thing that I'm focused on. So, um, I know y'all have a system of positive behavior intervention. And I think if we have more parents involved or more, um, people come together at a table discussing things in reference to parents, um, being at a school system and also, we must know the ibonics that we speak. So, sometimes things that we say may mean, mean different on, um, in the dictionary. Um, and, but that comes from actually understanding the culture. So, if you don't understand the culture or the people that are, um, actually speaking to teachers or communicating in different, um, situations, because everyone know that we have a preacher and then we have secular world, we have opposites of everything. So, if we're able to sit down to the table, communicate, figure out how, um, parents can actually be more in the school system or how we can be, um, less intimidated. Because sometimes, me being a big girl, um, also having a deep voice, sound like a man, you can think that I'm coming for you. But if you know me as a person, you know that I'm not, I'm just sweet as I can be. Um, but then, uh, when it comes to students, I'm really focused on intervening. Also, being upfront with everyone, letting you know exactly how, um, the community is at this moment. Because there's a lot of underserved people on Pearl, Ethel, Gaskin, and Baker Highway. Um, and there's more. Um, I'm not just trying to minimize it to just relax, but as the state community coordinator of NAACP focused on African-American issues, I'm focused on trying to get more parents educated and trying to see if there's any venues or things outside of board education where we can meet, where we can talk, sit down and figure out what we can do. And also, I seen the makeup of the teachers, of how many blacks is in the school system. And I just really think that there are so many qualified black educators out there. And we need to know the qualifications so that we can come to the forefront with documentation of going to school with what you're asking for. I think that if we come to the table and sit down with you and say, hey, I have a degree in this, can I have a teacher position in this? I clean, my background is clean, um, I've never done anything wrong. I went to a HBCU, uh, HBCU school and I just think it's just as good as UGA or, um, any other college or school that there is. Because once you get a degree, get a degree, because Cs get degrees too. So, there's a lot of teachers out there with report cards that has Cs, Bs, As. Because guess what? Things happens in college. But I just want, um, more people to be involved. And I know that Coffee County is a diversified school system and they believe in inclusion. But I think the only way, uh, is to actually, actually use an organization such as NAACP to, uh, find more people that may be able to be a part of the school system. We have awesome people, um, on our actual executive board. Um, we have meetings every Thursday at six PM, the general body is welcome. Um, I just hope that you guys understand that I'm coming here as a parent, teacher, also a member of NAACP, um, just to try to focus on coming together. Because we all celebrate MLK Day when we don't go to work or school, we all celebrate it. And I think him saying that I have a dream that a white boy and a black boy, a white girl and a black boy is in the same, um, area of each other, that should go for adults as well. Thank you.
School superintendent, I forgot, uh, Ms. Reagan Miller, you are my school board commissioner. And I wanna meet you one more to get a chance, okay? Thank you very much, I appreciate that, I really appreciate that.
Say one thing, one be, well, Ms. Rockington, you mentioned parental involvement several times.
Uh-huh, yeah.
And I agree with you a hundred percent on care for the white, black, the green, that's a serious issue we've got in the school system.
Right.
If a parent is not involved in that child's education, I don't care what you do, how good a teachers you got, how much, how great administrators you got, it ain't gonna work.
Right. Starts at home.
Exactly, I agree, I understand what that's saying.
And I'm, I'm sorry, I saw my time went out, but, um, I was mentioning also, there was an officer, I believe, that you're hiring. Um, but I don't wanna discuss personnel, I don't wanna say any names or anything. But we need to start looking at records of their arrests previously as well. Because I've seen a lot of disparities in, um, how many arrests they had toward only blacks at another location. And sometimes researching and looking up things before, uh, stuff happens actually prevent new issues. Because now they're gonna be around our babies. So, um, let's just try to focus on different things where we can prevent previous or be more preventive before things actually occur.
One question, um, the officer that you mentioned, let's see, employed here, um.
Um, I'm, I'm, I don't have any facts on it. Um, if, if you have facts, I know, I don't know if it's a personnel matter or not, if, if I'm able to discuss it right here. But, um, the, there is a situation we're dealing with right now with student affairs, um, at South Georgia State College. And, uh, we're connecting together, we're actually trying to start, um, some things there so that we can be more diversified in different situations and also educate people in different arenas to show them exactly how they should be on campus or how they should act when they do different things. Um, and how to prevent things from going, um, the wrong way and going the right way. So, that's our focus. And when we pulled records of an officer that is on that campus working, we found out that there is a, uh, high volume of blacks that was arrested by this officer. But then there was no students that were white. And most of the campus actually have majority, um, white if I'm not mistaken. And I just feel like, um, there's some type of targeting when you're looking at data. And, um, when you're looking at, um, different things, because, um, I believe that we're trying to focus on in Coffee County to build, like, bridging the gap rather than always having one side on this side, other side on this side. So, if there's a way that we can just try to bridge more gaps instead of, um, always having some type of separation, I'm with it. Um, I mean, call me, talk to me, um, I have an office downtown, I mean, I'm always available. It's tax season, um, I'm tax prepared. So, uh, you might can't get me as much, but there's other liaisons that you can speak to, to try to.
And, and the big vote to South Georgia about this officer?
Well, I just found out that they're having a stu-, they had a student, uh, affairs meeting with all the students to create an advisory board because of the incident that occurred. So, there's, uh, advisory boards for students that are being created, uh, through student affairs and the dean. And there's other resolutions that they have created because they seen the problem. When we asked for, NAACP asked for the records, they saw that there were some issues. And they say, well, come on, let's try to figure out different resolutions to combat these issues so it can stop happening in the future. Now, me, um, I was at South Georgia College once, once upon a time and I forgot the vice president name at the time, but she was an older lady. And she called me the poster child because there were some things that happened with me on an online class. They wanted me to set up a YouTube cha-, channel like twelve years ago. I had no clue what YouTube was or how to even set it up. Well, I did everything that I could in my power, but the, the teacher just dropped me out of class. Well, um, she done that to a Hispanic and another black individual, but we was working parents. We was trying to just make ends meet. And we was also trying to do the online class because we wasn't able to go on campus because of our, um, work hours. Then I was a work-study student and everyone in physical affairs knew me. So, when that happened, I had emails, documentations, and data of what happened. This was twelve years ago, whatever it was. But long story short, because I had my documentations and I had everything in order, I showed the, uh, human resource, I showed the proper people, and they just put me back in the class. Well, I still dropped out because it was just too much on me just to try to fight that. So, we wanna try to stop the school to clear the pipeline and wanna try to stop different instances where things can be hard on someone. Even, it's just hard to even just sign up for college. So, we wanna stop that. And then also, you gotta think about the high school students and, um, different things that are occurring with our athletics departments, different things that are occurring within every department. And I think, uh, we need to focus on inclusion and diversity. If we don't have a person or liaison or someone really digging into that data and analyzing it, we're gonna always have the same situation.
I'm gonna tell you something about school teachers. We got some good school teachers in the system.
Okay. Mr. Allen?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Oh, that's right, go ahead.
I have five minutes.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
We'll move forward with the agenda. Thank you very much for that participation, that, all right?
Executive session, I would ask the board that we move to an executive session to discuss personnel and the employment, employment compensation, hiring, disaction, or dismissal, or periodic evaluation rating of a public officer or employee. And then also to discuss, uh, school safety plans, uh, and the school safety. So, uh, this time I would ask to move to a executive session. Would you motion to move to executive session?
Thank you, Mr. Watt. All in favor? You move to executive session. Make the motion for executive session.
Hard work session is adjourned.